Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome and thank you for coming. There's copies of the agenda up here if you would like to take a look at one. And on the back of the agenda is the way that we conduct a public hearing which we'll be doing tonight. So this time I'd like to call the April 23, 2013 Planning Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda are minutes from previous meetings. Mr. Secretary.
I don't have any changes to the minutes, so I'd like to bring them up next week if we could.
Okay, so you're moving to table?
Table the minutes.
Second.
April 2nd and April 9th?
Yes.
Okay. Second discussion.
Set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Distained? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval not required?
There are none.
Sir? The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for AGM Trust definitive plan special permit, subdivide 10.29 acres into five lots on Hatchfield Road. Mr. Secretary.
AGM Trust Hatchfield Road, definitive plan special permit to subdivide 10.29 acres into five lots and one open space parcel. Tuesday, April 23, 2013 at 7:00 PM with Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth. By order of the Planning Board Clerk, Jim Fox, Clerk-Secretary. The publishing dates were 4/5/13, 4/9/13, and 4/6/13. Thirty-eight Butters, a Butters notice was sent by certified mail. Thirty-two signed receipts were returned. One was returned unavailable and one was returned unclaimed.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, at this time we will open the public hearing. And is there someone here for the applicant?
Yes, my name is Michael McGrath. I'm a registered professional land surveyor and a registered professional engineer. I work for Homes McGrath. My firm prepared the plan that's been submitted tonight for approval as both a definitive plan that requires approval of the planning board and it also has been submitted for a special permit for planned residential development. A planned residential development is Falmouth's version of cluster zoning. The parcel is 10.85 acres. It has substantial frontage on Hatchfield Road. It also has, it's an irregular shaped parcel. It has substantial frontage on Crooked Pond. There's a subdivision with a road called Shady Lane and there's a stub of Crooked Pond Lane. And there's another stub at the end of Shady Lane of roads that project into the site. And what this subdivision plan does is it creates five lots that we believe conform to the minimum standards for planned residential development. In order to get approval of a planned residential development, the first thing we have to do is prove that we could have gotten the same amount of lots on a grid subdivision or a traditional subdivision. So I have submitted to the planning board a copy of a grid subdivision plan that shows that we can get five lots. This land lies in an agriculture double-A zoning district. The minimum lot size is 80,000 square feet. So you can see that with the proposed road, we can get five lots all conforming to the minimum criteria for lots created on a subdivision. We have instead proposed to show a cluster subdivision or design a cluster subdivision. The five lots are created in such a way that they occupy about half the land. There's 2.85, there's just under five acres of residential land. The rest of the lots are set aside as, I'm sorry, the rest of the land is set aside as open space and it's over half the, it's over half of the total acreage in the subdivision. Along the frontage of Crooked Pond, there is a bordering vegetated wetland. Some of it looks like a beach to most people, but it is a wetland. The zoning by law requires that there be a 100-foot minimum. We show that there's 103-foot strip left between the bordering vegetated wetland in this and the rear lot of these two lots. The rest of the open space wraps around the site. There is one utility easement shown here. It appears to us that when we reread the easements granted to the utilities, that we could tap into and install buried cables in that strip that's shown there. We believe that the wording of the utility grants in Shady Lane would allow us to do that. As far as the lots are configured itself, the bylaw talks about 75-foot minimum where the lots have to be over 10,000 square feet. Lots 1 and lots 2 have been designed to take care of, to take advantage of a particular topographic feature on the site in that the topographic feature is that there is a clearing and the owner of the subdivision wants to build a house on Lot 1. That's the reason that there is this long area. This house will have a substantial view. There is an area that's already been cleared as a field. I think they grew trees on it at one time. So we also have tried to take, to create some things that we're probably, I could probably describe here. If you look at this, this is the DEP Zone 2 for the Crooked Pond well. The Crooked Pond, this is Crooked Pond. The well is on the other side of Crooked Pond. When the Department of Environmental Protection designates the DEP Zone 2, they assume that there's 100% draw on the well and no rainfall for six months. So the bottom line is when you have that cataclysmic type of event, then this groundwater will drain towards the well. I don't believe that this single subdivision, this single septic system and perhaps this one would ever have an effect on this. This existing Crooked Pond well has the same amount of nitrogen as background. So I don't think we need to worry about that. There's also a zone bounding right here. This is the West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay and this one is Green Pond. I don't think we're going to have any effect whatsoever on West Falmouth Harbor. And as far as Green Pond, Green Pond, Gray Pond, right, Gray Pond is very, very long distance away. There's intervening wetlands and the wetlands will remove whatever nitrogen doesn't become attenuated inside. We believe that this is a superior to a grid subdivision in that substantial amounts of open space are preserved. The open space will be owned by a homeowners association, be set up of the five owners. They'll be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep. For you to have to, you have to make findings about that this is superior to the grid subdivision and we think that it meets the design standards of paragraphs B, C, E, F, and G of Section 241-22 in that we protect the more environmentally sensitive areas of the site. We think that the, that we, that the way that this is working, there'd be three houses along Hatchfield Road, but that the majority of the developed area will still look like, which we believe that it provides a significant amount of open space that will provide suitable wildlife habitat. We think that we've also taken advantage of the clearing that exists in here to create the home site. So we think that this is significantly better than that. You obviously have control by the requirements of the zoning by law about how the open space is protected. And obviously, we get to use every square footage on the grid and there's absolutely no land ever set aside. Theoretically, someone could clear the entire area. We also applied for approval of a definitive plan because the frontage along here doesn't meet the zoning by law criteria for the minimum frontage if this was a grid. If you issue the special permit, you automatically waive that, but you also have to approve a definitive plan because we're not using a proposed road, we're using the public road. So we do have to get a definitive plan approval. I've gone out on the site. I staked the corners of the lots. I've looked at the frontage. There's more than adequate frontage, I'm sorry, more than adequate site distance either way. There's a large tree in here. I assume that they would put the driveway far enough from the large tree that it wouldn't, that would not interfere with the site distance. So I stand ready to answer any questions that the planning board has.
Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. The public hearing requires after the secretary reading the published legal notice for the applicant to make a presentation and then planning board members can ask for clarification from the presenter. So I'll entertain questions from the board. Bob?
Mike, lots 1 and 2, will they share a driveway?
We have to speak into the mic because we're on TV. It was not shown to have a shared driveway. There is a driveway that exists, but it'll be rerouted. There's a driveway that exists, but it goes like this.
Okay.
So it'll have to be rerouted, but we did not propose a shared driveway.
You did not propose a shared driveway?
That's right.
So each of those lots will have its own driveway?
Yes, there's more than sufficient space to.
For reference, this is the.
Yeah, ridge?
Property now where there is a wooden rail fence and no trespassing sign?
There is a gate, yes. I'm trying to remember what it's made of.
So it goes up the grade and then goes down?
Yes, yes. Pardon me?
It goes up a grade from the road and then goes down.
There's a topographic plan that's been submitted. This other plan that shows the clearing shows the topography. And yes, there's a ridge that's in this area and the road is lower. But there's other places where the elevations of these lots are very close to the elevation of the road. In fact, this one drops off a little bit.
Other questions for clarification from the presenter? Paul?
Mr. McGrath, you mentioned that one area for the two back lots is considered that way because it's already cleared. I came through there with Shady Lane and I certainly agree with that. What about the open space? Is that going to remain as is?
Under the provisions of your zoning by law, there are certain allowed uses that would, that could be on the open space. For instance, the owners could all use the pond if they wanted to by walking down a path or that would have to be constructed, but there is allowed passive recreation for instance.
Okay, the other question is are those two back lots going to require a nitration, nitrification system?
De-nitrification?
No. The, under the provisions of Title 5, if there was a septic system on this lot and it was on this side, it would be subject to the density limitations. But if you put the septic system right here, there's no density limitations. This lot is topographically, you would actually build a house here and have a septic on the inside. So my opinion is you don't need a de-nitrification septic system.
So the drain field would be toward the road, not toward the pond?
On this one, it doesn't matter. The lot's so large, he could have seven bedrooms, I believe, under the code.
Thank you.
Further comments or other questions? Doug?
I see that open space goes all the way up to the road. Will there be public access allowed down to the water?
No.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Doug, I'm sorry.
Is there public access to Crooked Pond now?
Not here, not here.
But is there through the pond?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I don't know.
We had an interruption there. Doug, would you repeat your question?
The question was whether public access would be allowed from the road down to the water. He said no.
I don't know Crooked Pond well enough to know if there's any public access.
It's a great pond there, there should be.
It's a great pond in the legal aspect, yes.
Okay. Other comments from the board or points of clarification from Mr. McGrath? All right, then, at this time, I'll ask if there's comments from the staff.
At that moment, Mr. Chairman, we'll await your guidance on the design concept. Do you have any change?
Are there any other questions from the board?
Just one more.
Bob?
There isn't any ancient ways that traverse this parcel, are there?
No.
Because Hatchfield seems to have a lot of them. Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Where does that path lead to and what would be the future of that?
There's a, there's a path that runs through Lot 1, comes across and it forks over to here and forks over here. There's a stub over here and there's a clearing there.
I was referring to the one that cuts across this middle into this open space.
That exists. So it starts, well, it starts out here and then there's the field and then it comes through like this.
At the top of that map, near where that bisecting line is, on my map I'm looking at, there's another path here at the top.
There's a path here. Oh, yeah, there's one in there.
Will that remain?
No, wow. There's nothing in the record title that gives rights to anybody else. So, and I don't believe that those are public ancient ways because they're not shown on the old maps.
So really, all the open space will be just for the residents in this five properties?
That's what the bylaw actually requires, that they be shared.
Any other comments, questions from the board? All right, at this time, yes, Paul?
The only comment I would have on the system you're proposing now is you have five curb cuts. Whereas the grid alternative would have one curb cut and two Hatchfield Road.
That may be true, but at the same time, I look at five curb cuts especially since the site distance is more than adequate as preferred compared to the construction of a major road with all the destruction of trees, et cetera. And what I did was I took photographs. Unfortunately, the Xerox machine cut off the labels or I cut off the labels and didn't realize I'd be happy to give more. And they basically go Lot 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 and there's more than adequate site distance for traffic entering onto Hatchfield Road.
Can we keep these, Mr. McGrath?
Oh, yeah, you can have them.
That's Kunamesset Farm.
Kunamesset Farms is right in here.
Last call then for questions from the board. At this time then, I will accept comments from the public. We would like you to approach the podium, identify yourselves, please, and then make your comments. So at this time, are there comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Should I use the microphone?
Yes, please. You can stand there and speak into it if you'd like.
Okay, my name is Jason Hyatt. I'm at 49 Shady Lane. There are a number of us here from the Butters that came, I see, and I just had a couple of questions, mostly to do with, not totally familiar with the planning, with the code. The first one involves the utility easement. Mr. McGrath, or this gentleman said that he believes the wording allows him to do that. And I was wondering if the planning board had looked into that at all and if they're in agreement or if there's any thoughts on that. Because this paper road on Shady Lane, which is called this piece right here, this is just lawn. It's not a road, it's just a.
Paper road.
And, yes?
Our decision here won't affect anybody's property. Now, all we're deciding is whether this creates a legitimate subdivision under our subdivision control law as a planned residential development as opposed to his by right grid that he could get. Neither case, if he has the legal right to use that easement, we don't affect that any way or another. If he doesn't, then he has to come in from the road and he has to deal with the utility for that. So that's not something we decide one way or another. Nothing we say here is going to affect anybody's property rights.
So that doesn't affect your decision whether or not he has that easement?
No, it won't affect that decision because it'll be up to him to get the.
Okay. I thought maybe because he put it on the plan, it might have something to do with your decision. The other one is this open space, there were some questions I had that were addressed by questions from the board. It's owned by a homeowners association, it's maintained by them, and there are certain allowed uses such as a path to the pond. So I guess my question was, for instance, can that be landscaped? Could you cut down all trees and plant grass on that open space? Under the.
No, you can't. You can't defoliate open space.
You can? Can you basically landscape it or is it like a conservation restriction?
Ooh. Is there a conservation restriction on open space?
No, the board, if you condition the open space to remain in its natural state, it wouldn't be a landscape effort. Typically speaking, they let open spaces left alone unless they want to farm something. But it's up to the board to determine if an agricultural use would be allowed. Typically, it's left in its natural state.
So, did you understand?
You know, when I hear something that's typically done and there's often like the.
Well, we would condition, we would make, it would be a condition of our.
Okay.
It's a special permit through this board and typically the board conditions its permit as recorded to registered deeds with those sorts of restrictions are enforced.
Let me just explain that tonight is a hearing. We haven't seen this plan before us before. And so we will be taking this, this plan under advisement and discussing it in the future and then determining whether or not we approve it or not and whether or not there will be conditions that go with the approval.
Okay. So I guess my input from as in a butter would be I would support that condition seeing as it's natural for us now and I encourage you to consider that.
Okay.
This applicant by right could come with that plan down there.
I understand that. I understand that.
He could come and there's no question about open space or anything else. Then you're going to be having lots, your lots are going to be right back against their lots.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, somebody comes in with an open space plan like this because they want to create a visual buffer typically, which normally as a selling point, it's a practice of that, you'd say they'd want to leave most of that in its natural state, although I'm sure they'd want to develop something down on the water's edge for their own recreation reasons. That's typically, but we can't dictate that unless we do propose a condition for some valid reason that if we let it in its natural state.
Okay. We need to remember that we're taking input here. No, we're not discussing, we're not discussing the merits.
I'm just trying to provide.
We're just, we're taking input from you. So we're not, we can't really address your questions right now. We need to know what your questions are or your comments.
Those were my primary ones, this open space, what's allowed, what's not. And I feel I've provided my input. As in a butter, this open space is in my backyard. That's what I wanted to provide.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Roxanna Smolowitz and my husband and I own Kunamesset Farm, which is right across the road from the planned subdivision. And I am happy to see the inclusion of open space in this plan. I think that's a real positive thing. I'm not so happy about the number of cuts on Hatchfield Road. I think there are too many in a very, very busy area, not only because of the farm, but it's a very, very busy, very tough area. And I can see accidents already regardless, the farm I know is part of it, but it certainly is only a small part of the kind of traffic that's coming through that area. So when I see that many cuts on the road, it really bothers me. And I don't know if there's another way you could reconfigure this so that you could still leave open space. It might require going to four lots instead of five, which nobody wants to hear, but I think that might be a possibility. It might increase the value of the lots, too. So that might be a payback for the present owners. But I'd like for that to be considered. And especially that first lot, I think it's lot number five, not lot number one, is kind of in a gully. It's pretty deep. So when you go out and take a look at it, just kind of observe those kinds of things and think about it a little bit. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Barbara Kurz, a Butter at 43 Shady Lane and I would just.
Your last name again, please?
Kurz, K-U-R-Z. 43 Shady Lane. I would just like to add my support for the open space and in hopes that it would be kept as untouched as possible. In response to what Roxanna was saying, I think that the road cuts are less of a concern because there are many houses along Hatchfield Road that are single-family residences that have driveways that lead right to Hatchfield Road. And it doesn't seem to me to be a huge problem, but that's my comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public? All right, hearing none, then. Oh, yes.
I, too, am in a butter to, I live across the street, so my land isn't actually...
Your name, please, sir?
Hillary Davis, I'm sorry, 40 Shady Lane.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. I live across the street, and my land isn't actually back up to this. I want to reiterate the importance of the open space. I will concur that the, with Ms. Smolowitz said, that I do believe that that road is, that's a very fast-traveled road, and I, my only urge is for you as a committee to go over there and watch the traffic and see the road as a passway. Just, I think it's important because it's on a curve. I don't want to jeopardize any open space, and if there is a chance that maybe it could be reduced to four lots, that is a very valid point that she brought up. I also am concerned about what, if any special permits are required, or what the whole...
Existing conditions.
I'm not too familiar with this, but I'm concerned about the impact of future developments as well. There's a lot of open space in Hatchville, and if you keep it that way, so I'm very concerned about the open space and the, so I'd like to keep that in consideration, too. And there is very limited public access to Crooked Pond right now, and it's very important to us as neighbors that that stays that way. And limited development on the pond as a beach or as a community. There's encroaching developments across the pond, across from Shady Lane, that have been continuing, and that's a concern for the use of the pond as a watershed area, too. So I just want to bring these up as points. Again, I really want to urge, traffic-wise, to see what it's like down there. I sit at the bus stop sometimes, we all do as kids, but cars fly down there and have five roads down there, five driveways, pretty close proximity, just seems a little tight to me, but I just urge you is to kind of go down and view it as yourselves, as a board, to really go see, because it is a country road. I'd like to see it and maintain that character of the town. It's, we don't have a lot of open space left, and what we can do to promote that, I would urge that.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, hearing none, then I can close the hearing at this time, unless we want to keep it open for any type of written comments or whatever. What's the, what's the planning board, how does the planning board feel about it? Jim?
I don't, I think it's premature to close it. We were, we didn't get to do a site visit today. I haven't even, I think I know where this is, but I would have liked a chance to go out and see it. I don't know if that makes a difference to, I still get the comment, but just, just...
Yeah, well, we got weathered out today for our site visit, and so, unless you think that, unless you think a site visit would impact the hearing, Jim, certainly we'll do a site visit before we begin a discussion and deliberation on it.
We still have to discuss it.
Yeah, Doug? I don't see why it would hurt to leave it open, because as you said, we may receive written comment. Is there an advantage to closing it?
I guess, does the clock start ticking when we close the hearing, or is it, when the hearing, when it's applicant?
Your special permit clock starts when you close the hearing.
Right.
You'll have 90 days when we close the hearing.
Okay.
Could I request a continuation of the hearing for, to your next meeting? That way you will have sufficient time, and that way, if you have a question, you can ask me, and I can submit it.
I vote for continuation as requested by the board.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. I think we need to put a time on it, if at all possible.
Date, place, and time.
Uh, so, date, okay, place and time. Now, Brian, excuse me, we are not meeting next week because we have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment on Monday. So then, the next time, we would have a session where we could entertain additional public comments and clarifications from Mr. McGrath would be two weeks from tonight.
Great.
And do we have, do we have sufficient time on that, on that agenda, that night, for our agenda to do that?
Yes.
And Mr. McGrath, do you understand, do you understand what I'm...
I request that we continue the hearing to May 7th.
7:00 PM. I make that up.
7:00 PM.
All right. Rich, I think you need to withdraw your first motion and then make another motion.
I withdraw my first motion. I vote that we continue this hearing to Tuesday, May 7th, at 7:00 PM, here in the Selectment meeting of the town hall.
Second.
How was that, Mr. Curry?
Well done, Attorney Latimer.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion then? Yes, Paul?
I'd just like to make a comment. I did visit the site on the weekend and walked around, however, I had never seen this great alternative before, and I did have a plot, a plan that was quite small, so I concur that it would make some sense to devote a little more time to this and get citizen input as well. But I think it's, I think it's worth continuing for the two weeks that we're talking about.
Okay. Any other comments, Jim?
I think it's worth taking the time because I kind of like the idea of the open space, but I'm a little concerned also about the pattern of the driveways. I think listening to the neighbors and what they want would make me move one way or the other. I mean, I, I see the changes impacting the open space or the pattern of the houses and the road. It depends, which way do you want it? And I think that that's something we need to talk about and listen to. I'm kind of sitting in between, but those are, that's really where the decision comes down on me, is what, how it impacts that.
So you're interested?
In waiting, I'm just to say, that's, I'm just giving a comment, I'd like to wait and listen more.
And the site visits are important.
Site visits are important.
Okay. Yes, Doug?
So it seems like there's a bit of a confusion with the Butters, where they're concerned about the curb cuts, but they like the open space, and it's really going to be one or the other, the way this plan is.
See, I don't, I don't see it that way. I see us, I see us...
Well, excuse me, gentlemen, I think what we want to do is wait for this kind of discussion when we start deliberating about the plan. Right now, we're just doing nothing more than extending the date for the hearing, which is, which is not deliberation amongst ourselves or discussing the merits, but we're looking for input from the public, okay, and the applicant. That's what we're limited to.
My point was going to be that we may receive more written comment after more thought, and that, I was going to say, one more thing, that maybe the applicant might consider two shared driveways, and then there would only be three curb cuts around the five.
Okay.
I would urge the board to note across the street, there's quite a few driveways, so I looked at it, to be blunt, is not appropriate.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's, those are things that our site visit will help us make a determination on. So thank you, Mr. McGrath, for offering that opportunity to us. Now, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion to extend the hearing to May...
7th of my clock hearing.
7th, 7 o'clock here. Is there any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. So the public hearing is closed for tonight and extended until May 7th. Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGrath. The next...
Is there a big farm right here?
No, that's up here.
Okay, see, I'm trying to figure out where this is.
Yes, no, there's a bunch of little houses.
Now, folks, as you exit, would you kindly keep your comments to yourselves, to head over there, please?
This is my neighborhood.
Okay.
That actually is all three lots. To me, it's a simple...
All right, the next item on the agenda is discussion. The applicant is John Bianchi. Site plan review to raise the existing building and construct a new two-story commercial building with associated drainage parking landscaping on .63 acres at 162 Sandwich Road and East Fowl. I believe you have something for us on that, Mr. Curry?
Yes, I'd ask the board to table this item tonight so we can further some discussions with the design engineer and the applicant regards the plans.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant tonight on that, on that presentation?
It's not a hearing, so they've agreed to come see us sometime next week, and we'll put this on a future agenda.
Okay, so then I'd need a motion that we table the discussion of this application.
I move that we table John Bianchi's application for site plan review until a later date, unspecified at this time.
Can I have a second? May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Mammoth Acquisition LLC. Site plan reviewed, special permit to raise the existing buildings composed of 30,000 and some square feet, and construct a retail pharmacy of 14,600 and a bank of 3,000 square feet at 93 and 105 Davis Straits Road and 238 Worcester Court. All right. We've had the hearing on this. We will now begin discussing it. We have two considerations on this particular application. Yes?
I thought you had to accuse myself of this.
Right, sir?
Are you up there asking me to be quiet? You have to tell those people to quiet when you go out.
We have two considerations here for this particular application. One is a site plan review, and the other is a special permit. Mr. Curry has suggested that we take them separately. I think probably that makes sense. It's up to the board how you want to proceed with this, whether you want to do the special permit first, or whether you want to do this, the site plan review first. The site plan review has a, has the most pressing due date of May 8th. The special permit is not due until, the decision not due until July 1st. So it probably makes more sense to do the site plan review first. At this time, I'll open the, through the board, to open the discussion on the site plan review portion, unless someone else prefers to do it differently. Okay. All right. So then, we've received comments from the public, and we have a plan, a revised plan before us. So comments for the board, from the board on the site plan review. Yes, Mr. Curry?
The board wants a description of the changes made to the plan, so the fact based from the applicant, you asked for changes to the landscaping plan.
Okay.
And you asked for changes to the south elevation, and with your permission, the applicant can describe those changes only.
Okay.
So the board has that information together with the board.
Right. That's, that's an excellent idea, and I see that there's someone here, or one or more persons here for the applicant, so please, please feel free to comment on the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, attorney for the applicant. The, there was a closure of the hearings on this. The board did permit the applicant two weeks to submit written changes on two issues. One was the building design, the rear of the building at the loading zone area, and the other area was landscape screening of the parking lot generally. So... This information was submitted in writing, so I'm just going to briefly summarize what has been changed. You'll see on the rear elevation, at the loading zone area, there are three dormers that have been added to the roof. The idea here being that visually, as you come in off the Route 28 corner in particular, you're going to see that feature. They've been added off-center so that they are viewed as an object independent of the roof itself, and the architect incorporated that specific design element here to break up the mass of the roof and put them off-center. If they were in the center of the roof, then he felt they would get absorbed in the roof and not be viewed as an independent object. So that was specifically thought about in terms of that design feature.
Could, could you please point, point to that on, or your...
Yes, right here.
Okay. You're talking about those little dormers?
Yeah, three dormers.
Okay.
So with that change in that loading area, which is at the rear of the building, we're hopeful that that addresses the concern of the board to add some more architectural interest to that elevation of the building. Dan Soline has revised the landscape plan, and that plan was submitted with a letter in writing describing the specific changes, but Dan is here, and he can briefly just itemize those for you as well.
Good evening. I'm Dan Soline, Horichu Soline Landscape Architects. Perhaps before I get to the changes in the plan, let me just make one or two comments about the subject that Laura just addressed. I think it's important to factor into the, to one's perspective on that rear elevation that, that the site includes existing trees and proposed trees along the southerly boundary here, as well as a proposed tree and understory shrubs on an island at the corner of the building. So, so what I oftentimes see in working with architects on their projects is, you know, you show elevations, and the elevations are oftentimes sort of, don't take full advantage of the, of the space that those buildings occupy and all of the features around them. And we're seeing the building in this, in this view, probably from a point where you would never stand. You know, you wouldn't, it would probably be somewhere off over here is where that view would be, would be from. So, so anyway, please take that into consideration when you, when you, you know, consider that rear elevation. At the last hearing, there were concerns expressed about the, the visual impact of the parking lots viewed from Worcester Court and Davis Straits, and also about headlights that would be, would emit light from cars parked along the outer edge of those, those parking lots, and that might, might, you know, shine lights out into the, into the streets. So, so we took those comments to heart, and, and I conferred with Mr. Curry about how to maybe best address that, those, that issue, and we revised the plan accordingly. First, we concluded that the existing landscaping is not particularly effective when it comes to this issue. to this issue, that the ornamental grasses and the flowers that occupy those beds are not providing effective screening and that we can come up with a better plan. So the proposal is to remove those beds, which are represented by, you know, these lightly hatched areas in these three locations, and to provide screening in the form of a privet hedge that would run the complete length of the parking lots on, you know, for all three bays. Now, that privet hedge would be, you know, kept at an elevation of, say, you know, forty-eight inches, you know, high, which would, you know, fully screen the, you know, or the majority of all cars, you know, parked for full coverage. I think that's an important point here is that we're really shooting for full coverage with that screening. So that would be really our first line of defense on this matter. At the corner, we've added some vegetation as well, some rhododendrons and hydrangea and shade tree. Our second, you know, element in this concept is to install six flowering trees in the landscape between the street and the hedge. We would have, we're showing here these sort of light yellow trees, those would be four flowering crabapples. And along this side, the pink trees, as well as this tree here, would be flowering cherry trees. Okay, the structure of those trees, and I believe I submitted through Attorney Moynihan information on each of the plants that are sort of, you know, integral in this concept. I think you'll see the cherry trees, the pink flowering tree, the white flowering trees, the crabapple, and then there's also a privet hedge plant sheet. But note in the plant forms that the structure of these trees is to branch relatively low and to, for their branching structure to be sort of, you know, spreading, which I think is an important issue because, or important feature, because where the hedge is going to screen, you know, the low, you know, the low band of view, the branching structure will kind of extend that in an upward, you know, upward direction from the top of the hedge. So, you know, we've fit, I think, as many as we can, you know, fit into that area, you know, in a sort of appropriate horticultural spacing. We're also, of course, preserving the existing trees, you know, the majority or all the good quality existing trees, which are represented in this sort of lime color. It would, the result of this, you know, would be a simple frontage. It's not visually complicated. It's meant to be simple and elegant. It will have flowering effects from about May 1st, you know, through June, across the frontage, and, you know, the hedge would be effective year-round. The, I also wanted to point out that overall, the site, on the site plan, we've included a dozen flowering trees on a site that currently has none. So we have six here and six more, you know, sort of, you know, within the site. We also have twenty-three new shade trees of various varieties, you know, that will, you know, create, you know, essentially an urban forest on, you know, on this property. We've got twenty-six new evergreens in the form of fir trees and red cedars. So primarily to provide, you know, screening, you know, screening to the south to buffer a budding properties, but also within the site plan itself. So anyway, that's maybe a more general description than you were looking for. But primarily, we feel like this is a concept that will provide a, you know, a nice gesture on the corner of Worcester Court and Davis Straits. It'll be simple throughout the year, spectacular in the spring, and, but also with fall color that will sort of extend the effects into the latter part of the year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions about the changes that were presented by the applicant? Yes, Pat?
I don't have a question. I have a compliment. I want to thank you. This is quite the change that I was looking for. The privet hedge is going to have the exact effect of blocking the glare of the headlights. I think probably more effective than putting a four-foot berm in there, which would be difficult to accomplish and maybe kind of ugly.
Well, thank you very much. I, you know, this is me. Thank you.
Yes, Jim?
I have just a question. What's the address of the CVS building? What street is it on? Is it on Davis Straits or Worcester Court?
It's Davis Street.
Because you keep referring to the side as the rear. Every, if it's on Davis Straits, then the side, then I'm confused what you call the rear.
Well, I guess I'm...
You both referred to the rear of the building and it's an address on Davis Straits. I mean, what, which is the side and which is the rear?
We've been calling it the rear of the building because it's the loading area. It's not the front entrance area.
But it's the side, it's not the rear, right?
I'd say that's probably correct. It's just terminology.
Do you have a comment? The address of the building is determined by the town where it's located. The effective entrance to the building because of traffic concerns is properly off of Worcester Court, because you wouldn't want all that traffic going in on this little town.
Set interest way on Davis Straits there.
Everybody now uses the existing building off of Worcester Court, even though the address of the building may be Davis Straits.
Okay. Any other questions about the changes? Bob?
Yeah, I was curious as to what size the trees would be when they were planted.
Well, the, I'm not sure that this is meaningful to you. They're specified in the nursery trade as two-and-a-half to three-inch caliber trees. Maybe more meaningful to you is that I would expect that if that's a shade tree, the height is maybe twenty to twenty-five feet.
Okay, so they're not going to be...
And maybe slightly smaller for a flowering tree.
Okay, so they're not going to be little saplings that it's going to take ten years for them to grow?
No, you know, a fairly good size. I would say sturdy.
Okay, thank you.
Are we certain that all of these specimens that we're going to be planting are hardy as against automotive exhaust because there's an awful lot of traffic goes along Davis Straits? I just want to be sure we're not getting into any situation where there would be tolerances and therefore, there's a certain diop.
Yeah, I don't think that should be an issue. The, I think there's, you know, we're, there actually is quite a green swath here, you know, between the street and the parking lot. There is a lot of traffic, of course, but, you know, there's, it's not, you know, pressed right up against and I think these tree species are commonly seen in urban settings, so.
I was talking specifically about the cherry as a crabapple.
Right.
If you have any additions.
Other questions or comments about the changes? Well, thank you for presenting that to us. All right then, so I'd like to proceed then with the discussion of the site plan review. We've received some training about the site plan review recently. I reviewed that today myself. I also asked Mr. Curry to do a couple of things. I asked him if the minutes of the design review committee would be available to us so that we could understand their, whether or not they've seen the latest changes and/or what their comments were on that since they now do that portion of the site plan review. Were those available to us, Mr. Curry?
Apparently, they don't keep minutes.
Oh.
So the decision is yours anyhow, Mr. Chairman, the plan review and special permit is yours, but there are no minutes period.
Sorry I brought that up.
You do have on your record a initial response from the...
Right. Do you think that they have seen the changes that were presented to us tonight?
I don't know the answer to that, but the record is closed, so you may use their record, but they don't keep a record. So I think you're on your own at this point, Mr. Chairman.
So then are you saying that the architectural style and so forth is up to us now and not them?
It always is. They only offer you a recommendation.
Okay. All right, so Jim, that was one of your concerns?
Yeah.
The architectural style and scale and so forth?
We're on the site plan review right now, though, right?
We are.
Okay.
And I'm using the handout that we received during our training to go through this, and I think it might be easy for us to do, to go through the site plan review if I follow this and we deal with these issues one at a time. Bob, you've got your copy of what we received and I'm using the one that was developed by the city planner, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, but that, it's just reiterated on the training information that Brian gave us several months ago. We all have notes from the hearing. I also asked Mr. Curry to explain two other additional things, review these with us, the, which I didn't quite grasp, I guess, in all the time that I've been on the planning board, but we interact with the Cape Cod Commission so infrequently, when there are questions asked about the ten thousand square foot threshold for Cape Cod Commission involvement and review, that the fact that it's a net number of square feet, in other words, there's a considerable amount of square footage that's being removed and then replaced but with new construction. So the net of that is less than ten thousand square feet. So we need, so just so that you understand that. I did not, but Mr. Curry explained that to me, reminded me of that, so I can answer people who ask me that question. The other thing that Mr. Curry said he could explain to us briefly is about the DRI process, which many of the, many comments from the public at our hearing were related to the development of regional impact process. And Mr. Curry, could you just briefly tell us how the Cape Cod Commission deals with that?
Your question was, a process question. In your record, there's a letter to the commission from the applicant and a letter back from the commission regards a mandatory referral.
Right.
There's two types of referrals. One is a mandatory one, that's a matter of law, it has to go because of the sort of threshold criteria, that's that net ten thousand square feet. You heard comments from the public at your hearings regarding a discretionary referral. That is a referral that would come from a public board that has an active permit in front of it, that the commission could accept at its discretion. In other words, you might send something along asking for a certain referral as a development of regional impact, they at their discretion then can accept it or not accept. That's the process.
And they did respond to us in the form of an opinion on traffic. Is that correct?
In your record, you'll have a note, two notes. There'll be an email from a, there's two emails. One regards site planning process, site plan. Another email from their traffic person regards a review of the traffic report that's there from Vennessens. So it's two pieces of information from the commission in your record.
Okay. So just taking it one point at a time on the site plan review portion, the pedestrian and vehicular access to and egress from the site. There are comments from the planning board on that particular issue.
Those will be improved by this change. Both of those will be significantly improved.
Over what currently is there?
Over what's currently there.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
See, I go back thirty years when Christopher's was there. And you look at the impact a small restaurant had on that corner. And then you have a large corporate pharmacy that comes into town, and every village had its own pharmacy at one point. And those have all gone out of business, so all those customers now are drawn towards the center of town. So this has had a huge impact on this pot of T-ticket. And what I was hoping for, when, as a customer of CVS and going out there, and it's a nightmare for me to deal with that lot and the access to it as it is, expanding the lot, given a blank slate, and all we got was the same thing, just not, to me, there isn't a huge amount of improvement, and I was hoping for improvement. I mean, now you have the CVS and you have residences and then you have that other business area that doesn't receive the amount of volume of traffic. I just don't see a vast improvement. I don't see an attempt to relocate the building, maybe closer to the street, change the way the drive-through goes through that makes it an improvement because you've got these two businesses back-to-back with a small condensed area. I don't see an improvement.
I disagree. I just wanted to say...
Wait a minute, Rich. I just, you've spoken, is there anybody else wanting to come in on that? Doug?
Well, although it's not a perfect plan, it does seem to be an improvement because you haven't held it on to Worcester Court. Then the comment about moving it closer to the road, and I've seen that in a couple of places and I don't like that new approach. It's, to me, more of a city feel. And I understand the concept to put the parking in the back, but I don't care for it. We've got that housing development on East Main Street. It's impending, you know, it's imposing on the street and the Abilino Square and a few other places that we've tried that. I don't, personally, I don't like that approach. I think the privet hedge is a big improvement here to hide and shade that and screen that parking. It's just my personal feeling about that. I mean, they could have redesigned and moved to the road, but I don't think that's better.
See, I don't like parking right on the road. Main Street is a perfect example of that. I think when you, this, what I started doing is I went on the web and I started researching CVS buildings all around the country and they're all the same. Yeah, this could be in Peoria. It's that whole, that same thing, that strip mall mentality of parking in front and no attempt to even work its way into Cape Cod. And I looked to see if there was one on Martha's Vineyard or Nantucket and there wasn't. And I wonder why. I just, yeah.
Yeah, Rich?
What you're talking about, I agree with you. I loved having, living in the town where you had Christopher's Restaurant there, where you had old Busolt's Pharmacy and Pell's Pharmacy, you had the Woods Hole Pharmacy, you had the North Donald Pharmacy. But that horse has left the barn.
Right.
That was Cape Cod. That doesn't exist anymore in town.
I agree with that.
So what we've got to do is we've got to do the best we can with what does exist. And what I'm looking at here, now you're saying that, well, the last thing we want to do is to make it easy... is to make it easy to get in from Davis Straits over to Worcester Court by giving them a nice straight shot, because what's going to happen then is you're going to have lots of accidents, people going through there at high speed trying to get, avoid the traffic light. So this reasonably makes that more difficult. You've got good easy access in and out for the other business and improved access in and out for the CVS. And they're clearly not that well-connected, and they should not be that well-connected. Now, as far as moving the building close to the street, we've heard Jim talking about, well, there's big ugly structure here and you've got to put the dormers there. How are you going to get the screening that Mr. Celine was talking about if you put that building right up there on the street? How are you going to get that screening? You're going to see all that ugly stuff.
Well, are you trying to hide an ugly building? I mean, that's, that to me is what you're doing.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, number one. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah.
We have too many people in this town who come down here and they want to turn it back into framing. Well, they've been doing a damn good job of it and we've not been doing a good enough job of stopping it. But that's the reality we face now. So what I'm looking at is we have a fairly dysfunctional lot right now. And this is going to be a significant improvement. It's going to improve the parking. As far as the parking being on the street, I think this idea of putting the private hedge up is going to do a lot to ameliorate that. And we thank Pat for raising the issue and Mr. Celine for coming up with that nifty solution. So again, I'm going to say this is a net improvement and that standard is net.
I think it's a minimal improvement, given what could have possibly happened. It's a minimal improvement. So we'll disagree, Rich. That's okay.
Any other comments?
I think the...
Oh, go ahead, Doug.
Excuse me. I just can say the landscape is a huge improvement.
And what?
The landscaping itself is a huge improvement to the lot.
Pat?
I stand with what I said. That is a world of difference that it's going to make to the whole appearance of the building in that corner. My concern is that the landscaping be kept up because so frequently we see wonderful plantings and then everything dies, gets scraggly and ugly looking. If that landscaping is kept up and neat and taken care of, you won't see the cars that much behind that private hedge of four feet tall. You'll see the trucks, but you won't see a whole lot of the cars. And you'll see the tops of the trucks.
Just let me interrupt. Landscaping is one of the issues that we're going to discuss shortly. Right now, we're discussing pedestrian and vehicular access to and egress from the site. That's what we're talking about. Pedestrian and vehicular access to and from the site. That's the first thing we're discussing.
That's going to be significant improvement.
Okay. All right. And next, are there any more comments on that?
I need a scale because...
There is one at the bottom, Bob, at the bottom of the paper there.
I want to know the distance between the ends of each parking space in the front. What is the scale? One's 40.
24.
Okay, so that's 22. Okay, so that's 22. I just find that, again, the way it is now, is that distance between the two parking areas in the front, where you put that lane, is that wider now?
Than it was? Than it was?
It's 24, so it's wider now than it was?
I'm sorry. Does the design engineer have the difference between existing and proposed? For the aisle with... Aisle with difference between existing and proposed?
The proposed conforms to bylaw, which is 1824, 1850. There was a change in the dimensional requirements. I don't have a plan in front of me, but I'd have to go up and look at the condition, but I believe it's only 60 feet. It's a 62.
60. What is 60 versus 62, Mr. McGraw?
The total difference would be 62. I hold a colored copy of the plan. From edge of pavement to edge of pavement is supposed to be 62 feet, I believe.
And the existing?
No, it's 60. I'm sorry.
So it's two feet, two feet more?
No, I think it's the same. Does someone have the existing conditions plan that I can look at?
Well, we have one with the, with the scale at the bottom. I have to agree that backing out of the existing parking spaces there is very tricky.
This is proposed. And this is proposed. It is existing.
And we're actually looking at the next item on the site plan review, which is parking and loading. So we'll just segue into that.
Next lady, it's 60.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's the same.
It's the same.
So what? Double loaded space, double loaded parking area is the same, 60 feet.
It's the same proposed as existing.
Yes.
Okay. So Bob, that's your issue, right?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to know if it was the same.
You have, you have comment about that?
Well, yeah, I just find it, it's just tough to pull in there. And if you're coming in and you're turning in, it's tough to make that radius sometimes. But if it conforms, then it conforms.
Yeah, it seems to me if they were diagonally, if they were on there diagonally, it would be a lot easier to get in and out of them rather than backing out straight out. Doug, did you have a comment?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay.
I just would want to see a condition that the area be designated for employee parking and it be basically in the, I guess it'd be the southwest portion of the apartment.
Okay, so you're interested in designated employee parking?
Right.
We did talk about that the last time we talked. There's the first few spaces on the corner of the building near that entrance from Davis Street.
That would also minimize the problem of traffic, cars backing out because employee parking would be there mostly all day. So it would be a constant threat of change backing into the people entering the...
Okay. All right, well then, we've talked about pedestrian and vehicular access and egress from the light from the site and also parking and loading. Any comments on the loading dock and the way that was changed?
Seems more feasible now.
Doesn't, you feel that's an improvement? Okay. All right, the next, the next item is landscaping, screening and buffers. That was covered tonight, in tonight's presentation about the changes that were made. Pat, you've already made your positive comments. Any other, any other comments? Pro or con on the landscaping, screening and buffers? Okay. Lighting. I'm not sure we talked too much about lighting other than lighting from the automobiles shining onto the streets. Normally lighting shows up on the landscaping plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Let's see if we can find that. I don't recall that we discussed lighting much. I think the applicant did say something about shining on the building or that kind of thing. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't leave the lot, something like that?
Correct. There's lighting on the landscaping plan and on the buildings. It's not supposed to escape where a lot of lights are.
Right. Okay.
So we could condition it has to stay on it.
You know, if you go to Florida and you go in their, in their mall areas, you know, this type of thing, they have these low lights around the park, the parking areas and so forth. They're not up very high. And they seem to give adequate lighting for pedestrians to move to the buildings and so forth from the parking lots. I don't know whether that's... I can't remember any, anything on the landscaping. Let me see if I... This isn't the landscaping plan, is it?
You're creating it on the site plan.
That's existing conditions. Is this it here?
Could ask the applicant to identify it. Is it on the site plan or is it on the landscaping plan inside? There's a lighting plan on the near parking.
There's a lighting plan. Stormwater utilities, erosion control. Maybe I've, maybe I've gone past it. Does anybody have any comments on the lighting as what is proposed, Jim?
Well, I think if we can condition it that there's no uplighting in the sky and all the lighting to the ground stays on the site, that's pretty much what we're supposed to do, right?
All right. I guess aesthetically speaking, I think that's the way they do it in Florida. They, instead of having a light pole, light shining down, they have this low kind of, you know, it comes up about, I don't know, three or four feet and it sort of shines out rather than down.
And the little posts like you're talking about.
Do you know what I mean? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm saying even if it's higher, as long as it's shielded so it doesn't uplight into the sky and comes down to the site, they should be able to figure it out.
Okay. Signage. There were some comments from the public about the number of signs on the property. Mostly, I think, directing traffic, one way, this way, that way, in and out. Are there any comments about signage? The ones, the ones that are on the pavement, okay, there's some on the pavement and they're also, it's like, see, there's a stop sign there. There's a lot of signs on this property because there's, the traffic is, is, there's a lot of one-way traffic on this, on this, and then you have to designate between when you go from one way to two-way traffic. So you have to advise people about that. And also signs, no left turn, no right turn, those kinds of things. Any comments on the signage? Pat?
I understand the comment that it seems to be that there are a lot of signs when you're duplicating what's painted on the pavement versus the signs that are standing up in the air. On the other hand, what's painted on the pavement, I've seen a lot of people just run through stop signs. If you have a duplication of pavement and your eye focus is going to be one or the other, it would be hard to miss a stop sign or a do not enter sign with that duplication, I think.
The other thing about signs on pavement is that they need to be maintained because they wear out. And we should probably have some kind of a stipulation that signs on the pavement are maintained to some, in some way. Okay. Anybody else comments on signs, signage?
I agree on a complicated lot, there should be stop signs and pavement markings.
Okay.
Because the stop signs holds up better.
Okay. Also, I mean, you can have a sign and then you can have an architecturally pleasing sign.
That's also true.
And I don't know to what degree we can ask for that. I mean, a regular old...
Regular old red.
Red stop sign versus a...
Red, occasional stop sign. Nobody can say, oh, I thought that was an advertisement.
Well, I understand that, yeah, I understand. Okay. Any other comments on signage? Stormwater management, I believe that's been dealt with from an engineering point of view.
Yes, engineering has signed up on the stormwater.
All right. Water and wastewater systems, I believe they'll be on town water and, let me think. I can't remember whether they're hooking up to sewer or not.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay. Details. Okay. All right. Any comments then on water, wastewater systems? And architectural style and scale? Back to that one. I, personally, when I see some of the CVS stores with their big black opaque window, I'm turned off immediately. And I'm thinking that is absolutely the opposite of what Cape Cod is about. And there are some of those around here. I don't think there's one of those incorporated in this design. So it's, it's somewhat better than some of the existing CVS properties that are on the Cape right now. But I think we're open to comments on, on this. And as to whether or not you're, how you feel about it. Yes, Doug?
I think it's better than average. They've done a lot to try to make it Cape Cod with the shingles and the clapboard and the details. It's a lot better than what's there now with the giant moldings and...
That corner, I'm sorry. That corner of Davis Straits, leaving East Main Street going towards T-Ticket is not Cape Cod now, has not been Cape Cod for 30 years. Has not been Cape Cod ever since it stopped shop. It's been framing. And this is better than most of, a lot of what's already there. So, I mean, I think that's, it's not great, but it is what it is.
Other comments? And by the way, let me, let me just make, say that we have elevations for the CVS, but I do recall that there were some elevations for the bank. And I can't recall, I don't know whether the applicant will have any here tonight or not. But I, as I recall, they were more Cape Cod-ish than, than maybe some other straight-up banks and so forth that you know that we have in the past. Yes, Rich?
Let me put an end to this now. We can go to Mashpee. If you want to see real Cape Cod, you don't go to Mashpee Commons with all its little fake phone fronts. You want to see real Cape Cod, you go down Route 130 to where the Mashpee Town Hall is, the police station, the old school and the old general store. That's Cape Cod. That's long gone. And, you know, people aren't going to come to the Cape to see Mashpee Commons as being Cape Cod. That's BS. So let's leave that stuff behind us. Let's just look at this. Is this adequate design for the site without being too ugly? Yes, it is. Is it beautiful? No. Is it real Cape Cod? No, but nothing that they could put in there that size would be. So...
My point, my point being that we're not looking at just the CVS on this site. We are looking at two structures. That's my point.
Sorry, just a point of information for the board. Do you want me to get the elevations for the bank or the upstairs?
I don't know. Does anyone care to look at the elevations of the bank?
I thought the board pretty much should.
Yeah, I remember.
Are you saying yes?
I agree, yes, we should.
Okay. And if you don't mind, Brian, I'm going to, I'm going to declare a five-minute recess for the board and for the public.
And we're still just doing the site plan review.
That's correct.
We're not... We're not, that's...
Yeah. All right, I'm going to resume the, the meeting and our review, our site plan review of this project. The next, the last, the last item is the architectural style and scale. We have been advised that the, uh, Design Review Committee has, even though our staff report shows it as an open item, it's no longer because they have, they have, they have signed off on it, have they not?
On the original concept, yeah.
Right, yeah, right. Okay, so the architectural style and scale. Bob?
Uh, just to counteract Richard's point about what's Cape Cod, Cape Cod is also Orleans, it's Wellfleet Center, it's Province Town Center, so it isn't just all country roads. It's, it's, it's Barnstable, downtown Barnstable, the, on 6A. It's 6A. So, I mean, you know, to say that buildings don't have an impact on what is Cape Cod, I don't think is an accurate statement. And we're talking about scale and you drive along, what I've started doing is when I drive along that route, I start looking at the other buildings that you're driving by and most of them are smaller scale buildings. You have a two-story building for a one-story business and you go along and then boom, scale, and then you go across, there's the bank, that's a lower scale. You go Taticut Square, lower scale, then the hotel, and then you have the houses. So to me, it's, it's the scale of the building and you look at the bank, that's a nice scale, that's a nice sized building. It's just, it's like I said, you can go anywhere in this country and that's what you see.
Across the street, Stop &amp; Shop, Ocean State Job Lot.
Yeah.
By the way, I defy you to go anywhere on West Falmouth Highway or Route 6A at Barnstable or on our Village Green and find us a building that looks like that. You ain't gonna do it.
Other comments?
Talking about Cape Cod because you put on some gray shingles and some, some clutter, that's BS. And sure, they can do that, they're gonna do that.
Oh, I know they are.
But, so, what's, what's the beef?
Well, I just want to make a point.
Pat?
I guess we're just in favor of CBS.
I think it's going to be very difficult to make a 15,000-plus square foot building look like a small building. I would say that what has come about, based on our comments and the willingness of people to make the changes, is infinitely better than we first saw. Jim wanted to see more windows, more dormers, which has gotten the building to be a more pleasant and inviting-looking building, I think. It's, instead of this huge monolith in front of you, you've got the breaking up with the windows and the additional dormers. I believe with the landscaping, we've gotten something that is making it look more inviting and pleasing to the eye. I don't find it incongruous with the bank that's going to go behind. We do have other large buildings in the area. I think the change in the color is tremendously advantageous to make it blend into the neighborhood. I don't want to be a walking advertisement for CVS, but I do believe they have really met us and what we would like to see on that corner. The only thing I can see is the massive amount of parking and I don't know how we do much about that. And I know I'm jumping to something else here. Because you've got a much larger building, presumably more customers, you're going to need more parking spaces. They also indicated that they do need that second story so they don't have to have storage trailers outside because they are going to use the second story for storage of their goods, which they currently don't have room for.
I thought it was all ones, on one floor, all the storage was on one floor.
I, my understanding, oh, you're right. Okay, sorry. I thought my understanding was there was going to be storage upstairs. It's my mistake.
And there, there are other architectural ways of taking a bigger building and making it smaller. Look at the CVS in Buzzards Bay. It looks like an assemblage of wharf buildings because they've got different treatments on different sections, so it doesn't look like one big building. Looks like, I mean, this is what I'm saying, there's no creativity. You know, come on. I mean, it's a multimillion-dollar corporation. Like I said, you can see this anywhere. Why not show Falmouth a little bit of creativity?
Point four, we don't have creativity in our standards. We have, no, it's a standard, creativity is not there. We want a creativity of, we wouldn't even have preservation because creativity is the opposite of this sort of preservation. And I don't, I think the last thing we want is to let people go into the Village Green area and start showing creative renovations. We don't do that. So, no, creativity is, is not one of our standards. Our standard is, is this acceptable within the parameters of the standards that we have to apply?
Well, I don't, I don't want to split hairs, Rich. You know, creativity may have an, an input on architectural style, so I'm not going to get involved in definitions there. But Jim?
Yeah, I want to make sure we have everything Richard said about this in the notes because I kind of agree with him on a lot of them, but this is a different position for him. I think that they've made improvements. I think we've got an eight-sided structure here. I like seven of the sides. I like two of the three arrears, I'm confused on the presentation, but I'd have to agree that it's an improvement.
Well, any more comments then? Because we've, we've reached the, the end of the list of the site plan review here. We can also condition some things like the private disposal and solid waste, a deadline to commence construction, restrictions on possession of hazmat. I don't believe hazmat is an issue. Limitations on signage, alarm systems, those are the kinds of things that, those are the kinds of things that we haven't discussed, but I'm, I'm sure that Fire Department is, would be signing off on fire alarms, whether the security alarms, I don't think we get involved with that. Limits on vehicles, we've already talked about tractor-trailers getting in there and being able to offload. The number of occupants in the building, I guess that's, that's also a...
It's all code.
That's a, by code, yeah. And noise limits. Noise limits we haven't discussed. Yes, Jim?
It doesn't mention lighting there, but, and I, I don't think we ever saw the lighting or we covered it up here, okay? And they, so it is, the, per plan, it says that the light will remain on-site and not go up and not on the ground. And that's, if that's on the plan, I'm all set.
They designated employee parking near the Davis Straits entrance because that's...
It's gonna reduce the logjam.
Reduce the amount of movement of cars near that entrance.
Yeah. Okay, um, some of the conditions, maintenance guarantees, we talked about, we would probably want maintenance guarantees for the vegetation and also for the painted signs, landscape environments, parking spaces, dust control, sewer connection, bond performance, hours of operation. We've talked about that. I believe the CVS will be open 24 hours, but, uh, we had talked about restricting the hours of operation for loading and offloading. That kind of thing, yes, Jim?
On the maintenance side, a lot of the site visits, I noticed it was in the terrible weather, but there was a considerable amount of trash interwoven in amongst the landscaping and it really needed to be maintained. So if we get to condition that, I would like to have some kind of schedule that was conditioned, it was cleaned up at least on a weekly basis. Because, you know, I know it was probably after a storm and it just melted, but there was a lot of trash in the, in the landscaping and it's a very visible corner for us. So can we, if we're allowed to condition that, can we put a timeframe on that? Is that a reasonable thing?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I gotta maintain landscaping and trash.
Right. Yes, Pat?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the parking for just a moment here because we're concerned about the parking here and the backing up, blocking access in here so that you might not be able to have turning. If we asked for these two parking spaces to be removed and the island...
Okay, you, you need, you need to be more specific because other people can't see.
Yeah, I know they can, okay.
To describe what you're talking...
You come in off of Davis Straits and you want to take a left and you've got somebody pulled out, backing out from that first parking space towards the building, on the right, towards the building or even the second one. Now, as they're backing out, they stop the progress of the entering cars. And so I'm wondering if we should ask, because there are excess parking spaces in this plan, if we should ask that those two parking spaces be removed and the island be brought forward a little bit more so that there would be no parking there.
But that's why I said it should be designated employees only.
Yeah, but even so rich, employees pull in, they back out.
Once, once a day, I mean, you know, it's not a constant, you know.
Those spaces might not be available when they get there too.
Okay. Just an idea, they need it.
Brian, um, they, they cannot, they could not move their parking into the public use district, is that correct? They couldn't, they couldn't move, in other words, widen the, the parking lane, you know, the back-to-back parking lane? They, they can't, they can't expand that, right?
Not into the public use.
Okay. Because I, I have to agree with Bob on that. I, I, I find, um, I have, I drive a pickup truck and I have a hard time, as a matter of fact, that's why I back into a lot of parking places because I, I, I don't, I don't want to be backing out of that narrow, um, double parking lane in there. I have, I have a hard time with that.
Yeah, it's, it's making the swing so that you don't hit the guy that's next to you. You know, if you've got two people on either side of you...
Yeah, you, you have to go straight back for a while before you start your turn.
Yeah.
And then, then you're, then you're worried about hitting the person on the other, on the other side. I, I just wish they could, they could somehow just give you a couple of extra feet on that. Um, all right, well, let's, let's go through this again, just real quickly, the pedestrian and vehicular access and egress from the site, we made our comments on that, parking and loading, landscaping and screening, that's been improved. Lighting, we've talked about, signage, stormwater management, water, wastewater systems, architectural style and scale. Any final comments from the, from the board on, on those, on those particular issues for the site plan review? I'm looking at the staff report, which was combined special permit and site plan staff report and, uh, there, the coastal pond and the natural resources, the coastal ponds seem to still be an open item. Mr. Curry, what's the situation with that?
Uh, they're hooking into the municipal sewer, so this shouldn't be...
So it's a non-issue?
Should be a non-issue.
Okay.
At least for the little pond.
Okay, right. And then the, the drainage, the, the final details with engineering, we've received those, okay? And then the design review, we said we needed a referral, we've received a referral on the first plan, but not the improvements.
The subsequent plans.
Right, okay.
But those are, again,...
So those were the open items. Anybody else with comments on, on the site plan here?
So, one time.
Yeah. Any other comments on the site plan review? We, we asked about employee parking being designated.
We never actually really...
What's that?
How will they get that information from Mr. Curry? How will they know which lot? They'll talk to you later?
Uh, no.
We're talking about these...
Right, well, let me explain to the board what the process will be next, now that you have given me all your comments on the site plan.
Yeah.
What my suggestion to the board is, is that we'll draft you a motion that incorporates all those changes in the site plan. And then the conditions that attend to those. And then your motion will then contain, contain those findings that are necessary for your special permit. And that's when the rubber hit the road. You've made all the changes, you've had all your comments, and you need to make all your findings and then a decision. I can have that ready for you at your May 17 meeting.
Okay. And that is not to say that we can't amend the, the, the motion that's presented to us by the, by the staff.
It's just for your use.
Right.
And as you know, I typically draft a positive motion, but all I mean, this is your, your guidance at this point, but you're free to vote into your conscience.
Because I personally have amended a, a motion for a special permit on the conditions. I've add, I've added some or asked some to be removed or something like that, as have other, as have other planning board members. So we're not locked into the motion, it's, it's there for our consideration and we can amend it at that time. So if that's, if that's the, the case, then I think, I'm, I think that's what we need to do is to go forward and ask Mr. Curry to draft a motion for us. You don't need a vote on that here, do you?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm assuming, well, unless there's opposition right now, he would draft a positive motion for us to consider after what, after our deliberations tonight. Is that, is that acceptable with everybody? Okay.
Let me see if we, I understand this right, but we're still just doing the site plan review, correct?
That's correct.
And now you're discussing the, the site planning.
Right.
Usually with your permission, Jim, usually what happens is you offer a decision for the biller commissioner, I think it's sent off to the special permit granting authority, which is typically the board of appeals. In this instance...
Coming back to us.
Coming back to you.
So we have another set of discussions as relates to the special permit?
Absolutely. Right now, you've pretty much cleaned up your site... Right now, you've pretty much cleaned up your site planning, you wanna make some changes, you've got some conditions with regards to maintenance of the landscaping, employee parking, low lighting, maintenance of signs, loading and offloading hours, removal of some spaces in the southwest corner, or employee parking, increasing the island, lots of site planning details that have been incorporated, and you get into that, those section 216 findings, and then, you know, we make your decision.
So we do the same process as he did right here, we review the findings under 240-216? There's A through F or whatever, we march down the same line we just did?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's the druthers of the board, then that's the way we will proceed. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the referral about Surf Drive, N-Star Comcast hybrid cable. We said we would discuss that again at a future date, the last time we did it, and that date is tonight. We have, we previously received a, what did I do with mine? We previously received a note or a letter or a referral or something from the, from who did we get this from?
It's from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
They have to hold a hearing under Town 207 where they dispose the town property or town project, and they did discuss it with us at their meeting, they haven't made a decision yet with regards to this, so it's a typical referral. We don't try to make the decision for them, raise concerns and questions for their consideration prior to making that decision.
Okay. So any discussion tonight would not be moved, it would actually then, it would be passed on to the Board of Selectmen? Okay. Everybody understand that, that any discussion tonight would be, will be passed on to the Board of Selectmen, because it's their decision to grant this easement? So, comments, Jim?
Yeah, I've been to a lot of hearings, I've seen the plans, I think they've done a really good job on getting this down and out of the way, and I don't think we'll notice it. My only comment is to the Selectmen and to town, I think that we're making a mistake in the way we're dealing with this. We're trading off a very finite group of benefits that only last a few years to satisfy some budget requirements that all take place in the next few years, and we're giving away an easement forever. And I just think the logic of connecting those two things is not sound. Ten years from now, everything they've given us will be outdated, the half-life of, you know, state-of-the-art communications and everything changes all the time, everything will be outdated and gone, and they'll have that easement for a thousand years. I think it should be a license, I think it should be renewed on a regular basis, and I...
Be paid.
They can pay for it, but, you know, it gets to renewed, and it grows over time like any other license does. Most of the time, whenever I'm involved with the town, and they're letting private industry go on their land, they don't give it away or easements, they always do it as a license. And for some reason, this structure's been changed to something I'm not, I don't understand.
I agree with you, I think we should be telling it's a bad idea the way they're doing it to begin with, and we'll wash our hands of it.
All right, well, yes, Doug.
They can't provide us, they're the ones, not us.
Doug?
It's more than just a private business, it's a public utility. So I think they have greater reach and leverage with the state, and if we don't make a amicable deal, they'll probably get the state to...
I'm not saying...
Wait, 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 let him finish. Please let Doug finish.
I'm just saying, I think that there was some indication by Mr. Suso that these things can be handled out of our hands. The state can come in and say, we're gonna take that land from you, or the easement from you for the public good. So we may only get a limited amount of dollars for the deal, but I think they've negotiated a pretty good package compared to getting nothing.
Wait, Rich, please, Rich, please, wait until you recognize other comments. Bob?
Yeah, I agree with Jim and Richard on this, that, to a certain point, the things that we are getting, I don't think are really long-lasting. And I look at N-Star's expertise as delivering energy, and somebody sneezes and went hole and the power goes out. If they said to us, in exchange for the easement, we will do more to maybe update the equipment, 'cause transformers blow all the time, maybe you'll drive around town, you see all the poles, the last storm we had, those poles snapped off at the base, that tells me that they were rotted. Those poles shouldn't have snapped off at the base like that. If they said we're gonna replace so many poles a year, or transformers, or we're gonna work at burying lines, or something to help the infrastructure, I would be more in favor of that than, you know, doing some high-tech thing for the CD room or whatever it is that they wanted to do. I would rather see them use their expertise in improving what they deliver, which is energy.
Okay, excuse me, just a moment. I'm not, I did not watch the hearing last night, and so I did recall when they spoke in here, but is there somebody here that can tell me what has been proposed by these utilities? And I also know that it's not only energy, but it's communication. So we're talking about two different things here, but that are both involved in this easement. Yes, Jim?
Yes, I went to the hearing and the town meeting, and I remember the numbers vaguely. They put an assessed, appraised value on this piece of land, about 400 or 450,000, something of that, and they're giving us benefits equal to, in today's dollars, about half that. They added up projects all over town, and I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but, you know, so they're basically giving us 50% of the value of the land, in today's dollars.
For rights and perpetuity.
Well, yeah, for short-term fixes and patches to our infrastructure needs that we need now, for a right to use forever.
Okay.
And that's, simply put, I think it's about as accurate as I can...
So I think what we have to do here amongst ourselves is to come up with a recommendation to the plant, to the Board of Selectmen, you know, a consensus here about what we think how they should approach this. So that's, I wanna concentrate on us doing that now. Okay, Pat? And it's not that we haven't been doing it, but we need to have some kind of a consensus. Pat?
I do hear what everybody is saying, and I do tend to agree that an easement goes for a lifetime, and so we perhaps should be looking at something more extensive. On the other hand, what they are offering us, we need now, the fix to the flooding on Surf Drive. So what I might suggest is that this be, what they are giving us be, what would you call it, amortized over a certain number of years, that a lease would be worth X dollars per year if we were going to have a lease, divide that into the value of it, and then say, at the end of that time, we would continue this on a lease basis in perpetuity.
Okay, so now, I've heard lease, and I've heard license.
Whatever you wanna call it.
Well, they're different. They are different. So, Rich, you have legal expertise.
I think a lease agreement with a certain amount of cash, forget about these fixes. The fixes they're proposing are gonna help them do business, basically. What kind of a deal is that? I mean, they improve their facilities for our town, and that means they sell more of their product.
Well, it means I don't go...
How's that, you know, how's that a deal for us?
Well, I know, so what would you, if there was a lease, if we would enter, if the town entered into lease, what would be the compensation that the town would receive?
Well, it's a $400,000 piece of property, figure a percentage of what that property is worth, and that's the annual lease payment for as long as they've got the property there. Don't be too greedy about it, but just say an annual lease payment of $40,000.
Okay.
That's gonna, you know, it could be less, it could be $20,000, but it goes...
So you're looking for a cash remuneration rather than a fix of poles and other things?
On a lease basis.
Paul?
I attended a hearing last night, and I was a little confused as to exactly what they're providing. For example, they're providing access for television service to this building downstairs, and it wasn't clear what the equipment was. I think there was a lot of confusion as to what they're really providing. Access could mean a wire to the outside of the building with no equipment inside, so it struck me as some of these things were short-term solutions. I think the concept of giving a permanent lease is not in the town's interest, however, once it's installed, you don't have an awful lot of leverage. You know, you're gonna come back and say, take it out, and the state's gonna hit the seed and say, you know, you have to do this. So I don't think the town's in very, very strong position on this, but I think it needs to be defined exactly what they're providing, and it was not clear to me last night, sitting in this room, what they were really providing. Repairs to Surf Drive Beach, DPW can do that, we don't need N-Star to do that. I'm not sure whether it's even in the mix, because it's not their expertise in the first place. There were some other comments about access, manhole access, and what happens if you lose the revenue of that particular parking lot. I think the reason they're picking that site is they wanna come down Mill Road and go immediately underneath and drill across the way. There are other areas they can go to, but it would be far more difficult to provide access over. For example, the parking lot that people use, it's owned by, I believe, MBL, or that trunk river is not a revenue generating area, but it would cost them a lot more to run the power all the way over Surf Drive to get to that point. So I think this minimizes their costs, but it's not clear what they're really providing and what they're really gonna give the town at this time. So I think the town has to spend a little more time figuring out what is in their best interest. But having said that, I think five years or 10 years from now, I don't know what kind of leverage a town would have if they, if you're coming up for lease renewal.
Well, that's, yeah, that's right. Okay, so, one more comment? Yeah, well, go ahead, Jim.
I also wanted to see, somebody should study what they're paying over the other side. I think whatever we should take into consideration, it's commensurate with what the other side is, and not just make this in a vacuum for a couple of quick fixes that helps our town get through its budget crisis the next year or two. I think that should be looked at the long term, and make sure what we're getting is market and commensurate what's being paid on the other side where they're coming out, and study carefully.
Okay, so they're negotiating at Martha's Vineyard also? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it seems to me that, yes, it's going from here to there, I'm assuming that there's...
Unless it's tying into an existing access over there, I don't know, the answer to that.
That's an interesting point, but the difference is, the vineyards are getting the benefits of this, we aren't, we're getting squat.
No, but the town on the beach has the access just like we do for the rest of the island, I think it's...
But they're getting at least the benefit of the service, which we don't.
Okay, Doug, you got a comment?
I just don't, I've never heard of utility lease, so it was an easement, so I don't even know if it's possible, or we can recommend it if we want to. But as far as what they're giving us, it's what you call a live feed for downstairs, and also for the Herman Room library, because now when they do the TV service, they have to bring a truck and all kinds of equipment to try to do a live broadcast. So there's a little bit of infrastructure, even if it's just the wiring, not equipment. I don't think they're bringing equipment, 'cause FCTV has the equipment.
So we got $40,000 the first year, could we do it on our own? That?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, I mean, you know, and then the next year, we do something else with the $40,000?
And the way that the managers were explaining, the town managers were explaining, these are in-kind things that would cost us more if we went out to market to buy them. And then the other thing was upgrading the traffic signal lights, adapting them for the ambulance signal so they can change the light, which is pretty important.
Okay, I'm, just Bob?
I just wanted to make clear that when I was listening to people speak at Town Hall, it was almost as if they wanted to hold N-Star hostage, and they wanna extract as much as they can possibly out of them, when there is a finite amount, really, based on the value of the property that they will be using. So I just wanted...
You got that feeling from what?
From town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah.
From town meeting?
You know, people wanted to hold them hostage and extract as much out of them as possible, and you can't do that. There is a finite amount that is allowable, and if we don't go along with it, then the state could step in, so, you know, it's...
I agree with you, there's good reason for that, too. There's damn good reason for that feeling. But I threw out $40,000, I don't care, it's $20,000. I just think it should be a cash deal, something that we're always gonna be able to use, and it should be on an ongoing basis, that's all.
Okay.
You know, the final lever isn't so important as the way it's structured. To get a couple of current state-of-the-art technology improvements that's gonna be obsolete in 20 years, unless it's not a real good bargain for something that's gonna be permanent.
Okay, so I'm gonna summarize, and then I want you all to see whether I've got it right. Our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is that they examine the feasibility of a lease...
Or a license.
Or a license versus a, versus a...
An easement.
We suggest that they have a specific list of improvements that they are proposing, and we are going, and we also recommend that they investigate the negotiations that are going on with Martha's Vineyard. I guess, it must be some town over there, would it be Oak Bluffs, or who, whatever town, wherever it's tying in, the town on Martha's Vineyard that is receiving the cable, okay? That we recommend that they, that they look at what that negotiation is also. I'm thinking that's, those are the three main things that we want. What else?
I disagree with the idea that we're negotiating for in-kind improvements that they wanna make, that I think we should be negotiating for cash. And I don't think we should be overly greedy on the amount of cash, I just think it should be an ongoing cash deal.
Okay.
We can always use the cash for the lifetime of whatever it is, we can always use it.
Okay, all right, so then the fourth thing would be that they, that they look at cash payments under a lease or a license versus the, what, what are these things that they're offering us? Amenities?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure improvements.
In-kind services.
In-kind improvements, okay.
In-kind.
So we have those four things.
We could also, I suppose, add, those kind of infrastructure improvements should be made by them anyway.
Yes, that's done, those are things they should be doing anyway.
But they're not.
Well...
Changing the traffic lights and modernizing?
Why should they be doing that? I mean, why isn't that the responsibility of the town?
Well, there should be an ongoing maintenance plan.
Because they are a public utility.
I know, but all their responsibility to do is to bring the electricity to us, we're supposed to decide how we distribute it, how we use it.
Return to the easements they already have, return to the easements they already have over us, they should be giving us state-of-the-art...
No, now you're getting into a whole new ballgame, Rich. That's going backwards.
Massive giveaway. First of all, the Selectmen want to tear down the turbines, which now are...
Please, Rich, we're not going into that. We are not going into that right now. No, sir, we are not going into that. Okay, so we have four things that we decided that we would recommend to the Board of Selectmen, because they've asked us for our input. Is everybody okay with those four? Yes, Bob?
Just one final comment about having N-Star make improvements that benefit them, and I'll give you an example. When MWRA went through the town of Winthrop, they chewed up all the roads and everything, and in payment of that, they asked the town, what would you like us to do? My brother, who was water commissioner at the time, said, replace 100-year-old water mains. He got voted down on that, and instead, they planted some grass and threw up some, you know, swing sets. And the water mains are still breaking on a regular basis.
In-kind, if they wanted to take all of the poles of Main Street and bury them all, do it now while the road is being torn up.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd say, hey, that would be a great, that would be a great, yeah, give them a permanent lease, and we have the permanent in-town facility, at least on our Main Street, that would be a deal.
All right, that's up for them, that's up to them and the town engineer, and however, whatever they wanna negotiate for these... these improvements. We're not gonna get into the details. Okay, so everybody agree then on those four? Mr. Curry, you have that?
I think an easement is forever, so you want them to negotiate a license or lease payment instead. You want them to be more specific on the list of improvements. They seem to be in NSTARs and Comcast and Light and Corporate Self-Interests. They should be more long-lasting and perhaps like updating their power equipment, what's all, bearing lines. It should be commensurate with any other compensation package on Martha's Vineyard. Consider a stream of cash instead of in-kind services.
Okay. Everybody got it?
Yeah.
Pretty different from what they've agreed to.
Hey, they, well, if they've already agreed to something, then why would they be asking us for input? I assume that they...
Oh, I mean, all right. Excuse me, I shouldn't say what they've agreed to or what they've opposed.
Okay, all right. They, hey, they asked for our input, and they got, they got the input from seven other people?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let me see here. We are now getting towards the end of our agenda. New business. The, I, we are, oh, by the way, I spoke with Mr. Curry about the redoing of this, this particular document that we have here, which was voted by town meeting to do at least a beginning of that. And so, Mr. Curry, as, well, I'm not gonna, you had indicated that you wanted some input from us that you would pass on, and so maybe you could explain that.
Sure, I might. Under new business, I'd suggest to the board that you have a discussion on your next agenda, which will be May the 7th, regards the scope of work for the updating or the review of the zoning bylaw. So if you have some specific comments to pass along, the money was voted under the jurisdiction of the town manager, but I'm sure he's gonna ask for Mr. Duffy's and others' comments. I think the board should weigh in as a board, as to what you see as your priorities when you're working with this bylaw, put in that scope of work. So I'd like to have that on your next agenda on May 7th.
Okay, so, does everybody understand that? So, in other words, he's looking for general comments and/or specific comments in this, in this document that you think need to be addressed by the organization that, which will be hired to do this. This will not be an internal thing. This will be done by a professional organization that deals with these for other, for towns. And so, if you...
I'll have those ready for your next meeting on the 7th.
Right. So you want us, and in what form do you want us to bring that? Do you want us to bring that to you verbally?
I'd like it just, I'd like it for the board members just to bring your, be ready to bring your comments for that discussion.
Okay.
Then vote as a board.
Okay.
Because I would like a vote of the board, and here are your, after you discuss your individual comments, then prioritize them as a board. Here are your top three priorities.
Okay. You know, and it could be, it could be things in here that are specific. It could be the way it's organized. It could be, any comments at all that you have as to how you think we could, this document could be improved and being made more user-friendly for both us and the zoning board of appeals. Okay?
And the board of appeals will be offering their comments.
They'll be making their own, I'm sure. So Brian, if you'd be kind enough to send us an email about that, so that, so that we have, so that we have that reminder sitting in our, in our computers and maybe print out a hard copy, Paul?
Yeah, just for the record, will you identify what the document is?
Yeah, it's the zoning bylaw, chapter 240.
What's the date of that?
The date is September 2012. I'm sorry, the most, the most recent printing is September 2012. That's what I have. You should have that.
Yeah, I do, but for the record, you should identify what it is.
Oh, for the record, yeah, okay. Now, also, Rich, you were going to do, you wanted to make a comment about LIC on, you said something about Thomas Landers Road LIC. What was that again?
Yeah, it's like, we're gonna look into the possibility of filling in the LIC zone between the existing tech park and Route 28.
Okay.
We now have LIC on one end and LIC on the other. I would make the case that, you know, we are gonna eventually go through an economic recovery. We're gonna have businesses needing space to go into that is already industrialized area out there, but, you know, we could look into expanding that area just between the existing, so we're not going into other parts of town.
Okay. So at a future, at a future meeting, we could take a look at that, Brian?
Sure. It's been on our radar.
Okay. Anyone else for other new business, for an item in the future? Yes, Doug?
Well, there was some talk at town meeting about how our shoreline's gonna be changing, and we better start planning for the future and plan our retreat from the beach. I'm not saying it's gonna happen next week, but at some point, we should start thinking about whether or not there's any possibilities of that.
Okay.
Okay, this is being taken up by the comprehensive plan committee and looking long-term at what we can do. And we'll be, that's land use, and we'll be bringing that to the planning board sometime in the near future. We're trying to work on the parameters of that discussion, so we'll get the input from the planning board on that. But we're very well aware of this, because there's anything from about two inches to nine feet that we might see in a variation of the sea level. So regardless, we're gonna have to look into what we can do from the standpoint of land use planning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Jim.
Just wanted to make a comment that we meet at Wednesdays at 3:00. And if you would like to come, dive into that conversation and work with us on it, you're welcome. It's an open meeting.
Okay.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
We can't have too many planning board members there, though.
If it's posted as a subcommittee of the board, and it's just three of you, and a fourth shows up...
Fourth shows up, we have to leave, okay.
It's a, Kevin.
Disregard that invitation.
It's open to the public, but not to us.
Got it.
Yeah, I meant to invite other people, but I can't invite you.
That's all.
All right.
I'll just press it amongst myself.
I had a conversation with Mr. Curry about the marijuana zoning and under correspondence, which is, unless there's any other new business, is there any other new business? Okay, under correspondence, I don't believe there is any in the folder, but I believe that you did receive some correspondence in reference to the marijuana zoning issue.
Well, it's not so much a zoning issue. The medical marijuana regulations that have been come down from the DPH, they were having a public hearing in Plymouth, and we had an email to that effect. And there was gonna be a public hearing in Boston that was delayed. I thought they were gonna have public hearings in every county seat route, but apparently they're not gonna do that. There's not gonna be a hearing on Cape Cod, and it's unclear if they're going to, when they're gonna be scheduled, and one's gonna be in Boston.
The one in Plymouth?
What happened?
Brian, will we have representation there?
It was already, it was already. But those are on the public health issues.
Yeah.
You know, once we know how they wanna define these things at the state level, then we can craft something. Our zoning part is actually gonna be very simple. It's gonna quack like a business. It's probably gonna be a long enough business where it doesn't...
So you don't think that, that these hearings will lead to state control of this and take it out of the hands of the towns?
Ultimately, if it's a state exemption, it might be they'd have to change the zoning act to allow for these facilities to be allowed as a matter of right. I don't see that happening. So I think we'll be okay.
So I guess...
The state, the state will, I'm sorry, in our conversation, the state may actually may regulate them, do all the inspections, issue their licenses, acquire the bonds. But the towns will still be able to zone for them, right? Now, the way, the way it's situated, we can still say, okay, medical marijuana facilities are allowed as a matter of right in industrial zones. There may be a special permit used in business, too. We still have that flexibility unless the legislature changes the zone.
As I recall, I read somewhere where they were going to limit the number of these facilities statewide, and I thought, I thought it said like 15 throughout the state, so maybe I'm wrong, and what was that?
Thirty-five.
All right, so 35. So there's way more than 35 towns in this state. There's, what, 200 and some?
Three hundred and fifty-one.
Okay. So if there's only gonna be 35, then maybe by default, we, if 35 other towns get them before we do, then, then we don't even have to deal with it.
Right, it's, it's more the accessory and subsidiary uses that go along with them. Remember, there may be 35 of these centers that are licensed by the Commonwealth and have to post bonds and do things, but they have suppliers. They can also cultivate off-site, so they can essentially hire growers. So now we wanna make sure, if you're gonna be growing this to produce medicinal-quality marijuana and process it for these treatment centers, that you're only allowed in certain zones. You may not have the facility you would go to to purchase this. It's those other subsidiary ancillary businesses that would support them that we need to make sure that are defined, and then the land uses are such, the zoning is such that they're allowed in the types of business districts, because that's what they are. That's why they're asking for agricultural exemption questions.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. That could, that could get into the agricultural aspect of it. Now, we have a moratorium...
A moratorium. They'll move some of that.
Which was approved. We have one year to deal with this.
Right.
But it, does it behoove us then, each of us on the planning board right now, to read those, to read those, that draft that came out by the state? Is that gonna help us make a decision so that we can come to the town in fall meeting with some kind of a...
I would read the definitions of what these facilities are and what they can do, both onsite and offsite. I wouldn't get into the other, the other stuff.
Yes, if you think we'll be...
Yeah, and you have...
Read the definitions to start with and...
What is it? That's where we start. What are we dealing with? We're dealing with 35 buildings that, I mean, where people can go to over 24/7 to purchase this medicinal-quality marijuana. But there are also, you know, other accessory uses, I call them accessory use for now, that supplement these 35 medicinal centers. And those also need to have a level of regulatory scrutiny at the local level as to where they go and what they can do. Remember, they can deliver 24/7 according to the state regulations for these medicinal centers. So I mean, you know, you need to make sure that your business zoning, it sounds like your business zoning, your industrial zoning are set up to accommodate them. My sense is you probably don't want them in residential zones. You probably don't want them in public use zones, things of that nature. But we're still waiting for those final definitions and what they can and cannot do. And once we know what we're dealing with, you'll be in much better shape, because they're gonna be doing that. And once we know what it is these things are, then you can craft a regulatory scheme to address the intended impacts.
Okay, so then, what we received was a draft, and so, and so that is being discussed at these hearings, and then when, then we will get a final, a final regulation, state regulation concerning this. And my other question is, the Attorney General said that towns cannot not do this. Is that right? Or did she just say that you cannot have a treatment center? I mean, that you must have, you must be eligible for a treatment center, I guess?
Right, you can be eligible.
Okay, eligible. But, but, but all the ancillary things going with that were not included in what she said? What she, what she...
I think that, right now, one town, it was, one town on North Shore had an outright ban on everything. Meaning the medicinal centers and those facilities that might support it.
Right.
And what the Attorney General said was, you cannot have an outright ban.
On the whole thing?
On F, on the whole, on the whole nine yards.
All right. Okay. Rich?
Can we also impose certain site standards?
I don't know yet.
I mean, for example, if somebody is gonna grow outdoors, it ought to be very tight security.
Right now, the DPH regulations say you have to have surveillance cameras. It has to be grown indoors. It has to have a secure system, has to have a panic button, has to have all sorts of security.
So we would adopt...
So we would have, you know, they would be adopted by default because the state is gonna regulate it. We're gonna get down to where do these facilities belong. They'll get into that.
Comments over here? Yes, Paul?
No, I have a comment on that.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment on the, okay, that was under correspondence. That's it?
Yeah, I have comments if I make, if you finish with the correspondence.
What, what is it?
I see in our handout, we have a Springbald Rose assessment from April 1st. Are we gonna be discussing that next week or...
Oh, yeah, that, those, those, those are for our joint meeting, right?
That's for your joint meeting.
Oh, for the joint meeting, okay, on Monday.
On Monday, yeah.
You'll have the report and some comments from Town Hall then in your package. Please take them with you. You don't have to become an expert on any of this. Right now, the commission will make a presentation. It's a draft report. If any general comments on it, great. Specific comments, great. We'll have a discussion Monday night. It begins at 6:30 Monday night. Your joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Is, and that, and the Cape Cod Commission's gonna make their presentation at that joint meeting?
Yes, the Cape, the commission, this is their report.
Okay.
So you're there to listen to them and offer your comments as a planning board. I don't think any votes are necessary, and then they'll go off with your comments and develop a draft.
So that's the gist of the joint portion of our meeting? Okay. So then after that, I take it, that'll be the first item on the agenda and their agenda, and then we will, we will leave.
The meeting begins at 6:15 with an executive session. I'm told they should be done by 6:30.
All right, then, then, then after we have our joint meeting, are they gonna hold their, that meeting will be closed, and then they will go ahead and have their own meeting on...
Yeah, they have an agenda.
Another agenda, okay. All right. Yeah, Paul?
The Cape Cod Commission and the CPC have been talking about this for quite some time. Is this a joint meeting with CPC, planning board, and the Board of Selectmen?
This is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the planning board.
And the planning board.
Well, up to now, the planning board was kind of a secondary role in this. Isn't CPC involved in this?
They have been invited to the meeting. They have comments, they have the report. But please know that the two elected boards are not, are not secondary. You are, you are the policymaking boards elected to make policy. This report is for you, and obviously, there are many commenters, and obviously, these committees have an interest in the report. More than welcome to offer a comment, but make sure the planning board understands that you're elected to set policy, and together with the Board of Selectmen, this report is for you.
Right. But the CPC, the CPC has been involved, has been attending meetings and making comments.
Well, I didn't realize that, but they've been kind of the lead rather than the planning board, appeared to me.
It's their project.
Well, yeah, because it was their project.
I was curious why that was occurring that way.
But just, it's a slight specific issue. This report, to me, is more important in terms of its overall study area and the implications that this planning board has to tackle.
Right.
Future land use in the area, how that migrates towards the harbor and this Main Street. That's hopefully the focus, my recommendation is to the board. There are some project-specific issues, but the big picture planning board issues are really the study area. Please take a look at that in terms of its recommendations, transportation improvements... Please take a look at that in terms of its recommendations, transportation improvements, transition zones, linkages to the harbor, linkages to East Main Street, those are the things I hope you as a Planning Board can offer commission staff guidance on, don't get bogged down on project-specific issues, which are important, too, but you as a Planning Board should be taken with a little priority. It's my recommendation.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question on that? In some cases, this report seems to refer to discussions with specific individuals, for example, Ray Jack, or Beth, Mary Beth Wisner, and people like that who provide input, and other times it says staff. Do I interpret staff to be your office, you and your office? I mean, I don't know what that means.
That's a question for them, because I don't have any insight, and we've had conversations, Paul, but, you know, there's a-
I, I, I've asked them to be very, when they said like, "The town," I asked them to be very specific about, what do you mean by that?
They had a town staff.
So those are the kinds of things that we, that we can ask to be specific about in their final report.
That's all.
Okay.
Can I have one final comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed we have these name tags here, and I was gonna make a suggestion, if I will, I think we need a new name tag for the chairman, and I would propose- My comment is, I didn't realize that the ability to sing it public was a requirement of this board, we now have two people, maybe we should make it into more than two people. But I applaud you for doing that, my only comment is, I don't know who's gonna be the next chairman, but they have their own big shoes to fill, but that's quite an act to follow. Well done.
Well, thank you, I, I, I have, I'll have two, two comments about that. I've, I've received comments from people, one was, "Don't give up my day job," and the other one was, "We're all chipping in for voice lessons." And I would like to thank all of you and congratulate you for, and, and the staff also, for, for spending two years on a wind turbine bylaw, and plowing through that, and the discussions and the hearings and everything else, and having it just about unanimously approved at Town Meeting, so that, that's, that's, that was a huge undertaking, under tough situation, and I, I think you all need to feel good about it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.